Ladies and gentlemen, it's a little past seven thirty in the evening, and I'd like to call the council meeting for February the eighteenth of the Sylvania City Council order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 All seven members of city council are in attendance, so the quorum does exist. I ask you this evening to stand and to pledge allegiance tonight led by Mr. Murphy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there, I don't have any additions to the agenda. No additions to the agenda for me. Mrs. Westfall.
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Members of city council. Hearing none. Mr. Stanford.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Bryant.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No additions to the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number four, the approval of council meeting minutes for February third, two thousand twenty-five. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the city council meeting minutes for the meeting on February third, two thousand twenty-five as submitted.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the council meeting minutes for February third, two thousand twenty-five is submitted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item five, we have in front of us Lucas County, Toledo Lucas County Port Authority PACE project for fifty-five twenty Monroe Street. Ms. Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I believe, the third project we've had in the city for these types of improvements. And basically, the city just acts as assessing authority. We don't handle any of the financing. We just are the ones that can place the assessment on the tax bill. So that's what, we have Dana Clark here from the Port Authority to go over the project in a little bit more detail and answer any specific questions.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dana Clark. I'm the PACE Administrator for the Port Authority. Some of you recall I was here late summer to talk about a similar project in Sylvania. The project being presented tonight would ask for legislation to be approved to place the special assessment. That is our form of repayment in these PACE loans. Specifically, the building is the fifty-five twenty Monroe Street office building that houses Career Bank and Venture Visionary Partners. They wanted to replace the boilers in the facility. Work is already complete. They have replaced the boilers and updated. They were just due to be replaced. And essentially, the program offers a borrower the opportunity to have below-market, long-term, fixed-rate financing for energy-efficient improvements to a property. So the low-cost rate is beneficial. Closing costs are as low as we can provide, all in an effort to aid in economic development and obviously, the energy-efficient components aid in utility cost savings for the owner of the property. Repayment on the loan is conducted through special assessment. So we partner with the county and the municipality that the property sits in to basically facilitate the flow of that payment. So it shows on the real estate tax schedule, and then when the borrower remits to the county and then further to the city of Sylvania, it's remitted back to us to pay down the loan. That's kind of my quickest overview of PACE, but always happy to answer questions. There'll be a couple of pieces of legislation presented. One of them approves the special assessment for this project as a necessity. The second one formalizes the participation of the municipality with the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District, which is the lender and our main energy special improvement district that participates in these loans. The Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District is managed by the Toledo Port. And then the third piece is just the final piece of legislation after the first two are passed that formalizes the levy showing up on the real estate tax schedule. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer, but if not, I'd just like to thank you for the time and certainly the participation and partnership with our program.
Questions from members of city council. Mr. Murphy, this is something you probably haven't seen before.
I picked Leslie's brain.
Fair enough. I'm still checking.
How much? Yeah, so we're good.
It is quite a large building, so a small improvement is pretty costly for that building. So.
Other questions from city council? Hearing none, we have resolution number four, two thousand twenty-five, for consideration. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce, I'm sorry, by title only, resolution number four dash twenty twenty-five, approving the petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects under Ohio Rise Code, Chapter seventeen ten, approving the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Sylvania, Ohio Corporation with the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District. I move for passage of resolution number four dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
The motion is second to approve resolution number four, two thousand twenty-five, as an emergency measure. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to proposal ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, regarding the same matter, for consideration, Mr. Hamm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of ordinance number twenty-seven dash two thousand five as an emergency measure. I will read by title only, determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Sylvania, Ohio, in cooperation with the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District, and I move adoption of the ordinance number twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
The motion is second to approve ordinance number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, as an emergency measure. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinance number twenty-eight, which is levying special assessments for this matter. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce by title only, ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Sylvania, Ohio, in cooperation with the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District. I move for passage of ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
The motion is second to approve ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, as an emergency measure. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. I know there's a young lady in the background who's a scout. So basically, the reason, the reason that these are being passed as emergency measure, if five affirmative votes from city council out of the seven members, you can move forward with the emergency, as an emergency measure. And the reason that most council business is done that way is because when the city charter was put in many years ago, obviously, the technology didn't exist, internet and so forth, so the opportunity to get access to that information, typically, they were done in two or three readings in the past. But obviously, with technology shifting, that has changed over the years. So council considers most things, with a handful of exceptions like the budget, and considers those as an emergency measure. So does that help? Okay. Sometimes that gets confusing. Mayor's, former mayor Stowe introduced me to that concept a long time ago. And thank you very much for coming. Obviously, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Shaw, it's your section of the agenda, although you've been doing a lot of talking this evening.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of you is our second project change order on the Main Street Reconstruction Project, just for Mr. Murphy's benefit. This is the piece that's between the bridge and about convent that we redid last year. So this is change order number two, and this one is basically a lot thrown into it to some up, some down. But a couple of the things that I just wanted to highlight that we had in the letter. Largest change in scope item was for a little over ten thousand dollars for some additional pipe removals. We knew an abandoned water line existed underneath the road. We didn't know it existed over top of a storm sewer. That shows you how old the storm sewer was that we replaced, that someone had actually put a water line over top of it. But we weren't planning on removing the, the old water line, but we had to in order to get down to the drainage pipe that was there. So that was one of the items. We also did quite a bit more sidewalk removal and replacement than we were planning on. Some of the sidewalk and the drive aprons and stuff around Saint Joe's Signal was not in great shape, especially after we were done. So we kind of bit the bullet and made some changes there to add in some more sidewalk replacements and get it all nice and fresh. So those were a couple of the adds. On the deduct side, there was a couple that I noted here in the letter. They didn't have a sanitary sewer backup in the area during the project. We found contractor materials that were in the bottom of it that caused a blockage. Our guys were out at four o'clock on a Friday afternoon clearing the blockage and getting it removed. Those are times that we can deduct from that. Certainly wasn't our fault, contractor negligence for the, for the issue, so we did some deduct on that. And then we had a lot of erosion control, which is basically just how to manage the soil while we do this. A lot of different features were in the design. We didn't have to use as many as we thought we would. That was a reduction of about nineteen, nineteen thousand dollars as well. So balance them all out. This one is an increase of eighteen thousand, seven hundred, eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents. We're about six point three percent over the original contract amount. Change order number one, I'll remind you, was an engineering plan error where they didn't account for some pavement removals. If that was in there, we'd be hovering right around two percent over on the project, which is more than comfortable for me. So I would request approval of this change order, which will increase the contract amount from one million, one hundred, five thousand, seven hundred, ninety-seven dollars and forty cents to one million, one hundred, twenty-four thousand, five hundred, sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Shaw, this is, change order number two is final.
I have one more to do, probably be a little small increase. That'll be the last one that we do.
What's the timeframe of that?
Spring. We're waiting on final restoration. We did some winter seeding up around the intersection where the traffic signal was. It's not going to take, so we'll go through and we'll do some spot restoration, and then we'll close the project out, probably May-ish, something like that.
Questions from council members for Mr. Shaw?
Generally speaking, when, this is a big question to ask, I suppose, of this city, but when they're resuming a job, do they have a variance they have to stay within?
They don't have a variance. They have to stay within, no.
So once, I guess if things go over, that you just have to use your best judgment like this.
Yep.
That's their.
We do a lot of negotiations that go on. Every single one of those items probably had an hour of negotiation that goes through. So, you know, some things you come across, you're like, yeah, just, we need to do that, like the, the concrete stuff. Go ahead and do it, knock it out. We have to do it anyways. The sanitary sewer backup thing, that was a lot of negotiation.
I'm just saying, I'm reading it that way, too. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Shaw? If not, we have ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, for consideration. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor Frye. This is ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number two to this city's agreement with Gettys Pavings and excavating for the Main Street Reconstruction Project to provide for changes in scope and project overruns and underruns, increasing the contract amount by eighteen thousand, seven hundred, eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Appropriating funds therefore, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
The motion is second to approve ordinance number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, as an emergency measure. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number seven, police department equipment purchase. Chief Miller.
Yes, good evening, council.
Want to talk about Leo.
We're going to talk about Leo. It's been about a year ago that I was in front of most of you, except our new person, to let you know that we were looking at switching from our Dare program into the new Lead program. We put that into effect in September of the school year, so we've already graduated our first classes, and we're in round two with our next classes for our spring semester. One of the things, Leo is, where Dare had a lion, Leo has a lab that's their face of their program. And you'll even see him on the back of our pickup truck now. We've switched out from a lion to Leo the dog. They do have, and we talked to Leads when we got in with them, is, do have a character costume. And, because he's been asked about by our departments, they have actually contracted with a company to make their costumes. So it's not like it's something I can go out and just pick a company and have them make me a stuffed-looking Leo the Lab costume and utilize it. They've kind of, he's trademarked, he's their costume, so we reached out to the company, we talked to them. He is quite expensive. He runs about ten thousand dollars for us. He has a custom-built costume. He is just what you would see with the high school mascots. I mean, he's put together much like that. Over the years, we've utilized these tools in the department. We've had McGruff the Crime Dog, for those of us that are old enough to remember. He's still with us. He's a little ragged. He's probably over thirty years old. We did used to have a robotic police car, if any of you had your kids in Safety City back in the nineties.
Who was in Safety City?
Bernie was repaired as many times as we could repair him until they sent him back and said, we can't do that anymore. His replacement, again, to get something that does is similar in price, ten thousand dollars. But with this option, we're really getting into Lead. This is something the kids seem to be enjoying the program. This is a way for us to start introducing, you know, even as young as our Safety City students to Leo the Lab. And the program is built to be a theme from Tiddy Garden to Wall Street. So it gives us a good opportunity to bring him out for community events. He can be at the Business Expo next year, if we get him. We don't have him in time this year. He'll be making appearances at Safety Cities. He can make appearances at Lead graduations, maybe a Northview-Southview game. So there's just a good outreach that we can make with this. And yes, it is, it is kind of expensive, ten thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, but I'm asking to remove that from our drug law enforcement accounts, that we get our drug funding through, through court. We currently have sixty-eight thousand dollars in that. We have received over thirty-six thousand dollars in opioid lawsuit funding in the last year, in two thousand twenty-four. And part of what I have to use that money for is for drug education, drug rehab, drug things to go along with that, and I think this is a really good fit for it. So.
Questions?
I have a quick question, and certainly just a curiosity, not a critical question. So will you rotate people through as the mascot, or will there be one person who's assigned to be the mascot?
Generally, we've used our Explorer program, or Public Safety Cadets, as we call them now. And we will put officers if anyone wants to be in there. I did make sure that this quote included a fan in the head.
I know that, that was great.
I've been volunteered in a costume before, and I'm telling you what, the fan, they said, well, that is, I said, that's not negotiable. If you've ever been in one of those costumes, you need it. So no. It's a good way to get our public safety cadets involved, too.
Perfect.
Any other questions from members of council? And I know Chief Miller will keep this person, Leo, in, whether you realize it or not, Chief Miller is a champion dog show. She's got all sorts of ribbons with her, with her animals, so she showed me a couple of them in the last week herself, so that Leo will be, will be taken good care of, right?
Yes, he will be. We love our Canines in this department.
No other questions from members of council? We have ordinance number thirty, two thousand twenty-five, for consideration. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce ordinance number thirty dash two thousand twenty-five and read by title only, accepting the proposal of Advent Guard for the provision of Leo the Lab mascot costume for the Sylvania Police Department. Appropriating funds therefore in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. I move final passage of ordinance number thirty dash two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
The motion is second to approve ordinance number thirty, two thousand twenty-five, as an emergency measure. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And ordinance number thirty, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maintenance, I know on the agenda here, we have six buildings that are involved with this particular request. Three of the locations are going to be roof replacements. Those locations are our Brent Pumping Station, which is not familiar if you're at the intersection of Main and Brent, northeast corner. That's our most critical piece of infrastructure we have on our water side. That building pumps our water all over town, so that has a flat roof that we're going to be replacing. We also have our Maplewood Avenue meters building, so if you're real close to Plummer Pool, there's a building that sits right at the southeast corner of that. Really old-looking, I think from the forties is when that was. That has a flat rubber roof on it as well. We'll be replacing that. And then our last one is our Monroe Street Sanitary Sewer Pumping Station, our most critical piece of infrastructure that we have on the sanitary side. We'll be replacing the roof on that building as well. So those are the three that are getting work done on them. While we're there, the awarded contractor, we've asked them to do additional inspections for three places so that we have better numbers on what those estimates are going to come in at in future projects. The other three locations are where we're sitting at right now, in council chambers in the police department. Not sure how this building sits long-term, but we
Not sure how this building sits long-term, but we certainly need to make sure we're on top of what happens with the roof here, so we're going to look at that and do an inspection with it. Our maintenance garage down at Haroon Road, that's where all of our utilities and our salt trucks and everything are housed. We're going to do an assessment on that building. And then also, a really small one that you may not know, on Maple Drive between Convent and Brent Road, it's on the east side, real small pumping station that sits there that has a very, very small flat roof that goes with that, but we're going to take a look at that one as well. So the engineer's estimate for the work is eighty-two thousand dollars to do all of that. We did have this programmed in the two thousand twenty-five budget, and the account numbers for both the water and sewer are listed there. And obviously, once those bids come in, we'll assign the buildings out correctly based on whatever the bids come into those accounts. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions from members of council? Hearing none, we've got the, on the station roof replacement for two thousand twenty-five, authorizing administration to advertise for bids. Mr. Stowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move to authorize the administration to advertise for bids on the roof replacements project for the three pump station buildings on Maplewood, Main Street, and Monroe Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve administration clerk of council to advertise for bids for the pumping station roof replacements for two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. No other items in that regard to come before us. Committee reports. Streets committee meeting from this evening. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this evening at six thirty PM, we held a meeting of the Streets Committee to discuss downtown improvement project. All members of the Streets Committee, as well as all members of council, were present. Several members of the administration, as well as a number of community members and media were in attendance as well. There were some questions about the safety of pedestrians with their rule to stop late at Maplewood and Main, replacing that with a four-way stop. There were questions and comments about pedestrian right-of-way diverted traffic patterns, enforcement by police of the stop signs, and as well as some details about the data collection that was used to determine the necessity of the light. Mr. Shaw was kind enough to answer all the questions, and we had a good back and forth from the public, and we adjourned at seven twenty-six.
Any questions or comments from other members of council? Hearing none, thank you very much, and well done on that, on that meeting, Mr. Richardson. Did, Mr. Hannah, you pointed to our Ms. Bosch?
I wanted to make sure she didn't have anything she wanted to say.
So as you all know, Sylvania Chamber is involved with this project and making sure that we're trying to support our downtown businesses as they're going to be affected under the construction timeframe, short as it is going to be, or Mr. Shaw? But nonetheless, obviously, we need to continue to support downtown businesses in the Chamber of government and letting the public be aware of what's going on. We had a nice, I don't know if I'd call it, it wasn't ribbon cutting, it wasn't a shovel thing, it was.
Ceremony.
Ceremony, thank you.
Celebration.
So that was last week, so that was last Thursday, so that's a little bit of fun with that as well. Thank you very much for your continued work in that regard, Tiffany. Anything else to come before council this evening?
Mr. Mayor? I was just going to say, Tiffany's also going to have five thousand business cards with a link to, so they can strong site, that it probably would be helpful if we had a stack each ourselves. It'd be a good thing to hand out to citizens, to kind of give them directions on how to sign up to get that information, go to the site, be kept up to date, help to keep everything of the energy positive about what's going on.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea, thank you. Any other items coming before council this evening? Hearing none, we consider a motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, and this council will adjourn until our next meeting, two weeks hence, on March the third, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you very much, everybody.